Good afternoon, everyone. This is a Prescott City Council's study session. Today is Tuesday, April 12th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Tenny.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Sishka is excused from the meeting.
Very good. We have three items to study and review today. The first one will be a presentation by Prescott Farmer's Market regarding the community composting program. You're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Good and council members. My name is Gabriel Kerbs. I'm the Assistant Manager at Prescott Farmer's Market. And I've been responsible for orchestrating this community composting project since we got the grant about a year and a half ago from the -- well, since the city of Prescott received a grant about a year and a half ago from the Natural Resources Conservation Service. So I'll tell you a little bit about how this project came to be and what exactly we're doing. And then I have a series of photos that will demonstrate what exactly we do on the compost site and what we do in the program overall. And then I'll talk a little bit about the future and answer any questions that y'all might have for me. And if we have time, there's a short four-minute video that was made like eight months ago about the project that kind of ties it all together. But if we don't have time, that's all right, too. You can watch it another time as well. So this project is a collaboration between Prescott Farmer's Market. We manage the program and provide volunteers and operate the site. The city of Prescott has provided the site, which is very important, and access to water and other resources such as leaves as needed. And then the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is an agency of the USDA, gave us -- gave the city of Prescott about a little over $70,000 to purchase tools and supplement staffing to manage the site and erect fence around the site and pour of concrete pads. So the site itself is on the corner of Fairgrounds Ave. and Shemer Drive, and the entrance is right on Shemer. And there's a photo of the site before everything was in place, but there's the concrete pad that we poured, and that's sort of our processing pad where the active piles are managed. So what -- the way it works is at the Farmer's Market on Saturdays, community members can bring their food scraps from home, you know, once a week to Saturday Market. So it's really a program that's targeting Farmer's Market vendors -- customers and vendors. And so we take those scraps. People dump them. Some folks have purchased buckets. These buckets, you'll see if you ever come to the Farmer's Market. It's a swap service. And so folks will get a clean bucket, and then we transport it to the compost site once a week. And then, in addition to that, we have about half a dozen local restaurants that collect their kitchen scraps for us. They would, you know, previously, all of these scraps went to landfill. And we see food scraps as a valuable resource worth keeping in the community because food scraps contain, you know, all the nutrients that plants need to grow. But previously, you know, they were landfilled for the most part unless folks were composting in their backyard, which many community members do. But we created this project as an outlet for those who couldn't. So these are some of the participating businesses.
Gabriel, are you continuing to recruit restaurants to provide scraps?
That's a good question. At this point, we've sort of -- we've bid off enough for now. And, you know, one common issue with like new composting sites is taking on too much too fast. So right now, we're happy with the amount of organics that we're processing. We have the ability to take on a little bit more, but we want to prioritize Farmer's Market vendors having the opportunity to bring us their scraps. So we're going to let that play out a little bit longer. The site itself is about a third of an acre, which is -- it's great, and it's been perfect for this pilot project. But we can't really expand too much without running into some issues that would come along.
Good plan.
Yeah. So yeah, we collect these scraps, bring them to the site. It's pretty much pre-consumer scraps from the restaurants and anything but meat and dairy. It is an urban composting operation, so we don't process things that are inevitably odorous like meat and dairy. There are ways, you know, we use practices that keep the odors from being really foul and offensive. And I encourage all of you to visit the site sometime when we do these work sessions to see what I'm talking about. But we also collect carbon-rich ingredients from woodchops and donated straw from various places. The city of Prescott has given us leaves. We hope to continue that sort of thing in future falls. We accept leaves from customers as well at the market. Those are key ingredients to the composting process. Then every Sunday morning, so we collect the scraps on Saturdays, and then in order to avoid storing raw materials on the site for long periods of time, which would be an issue, Sunday mornings, we have a crew of volunteers that show up every single Sunday. We just had our 52nd work session this past Sunday, so a year of compost. And every single week, there have been -- there's been an incredible turnout of volunteers who show up to chop vegetables and make compost piles and learn about compost, which has been incredible. So folks from, you know, seven years old to late 70s, from different backgrounds, different schools, just it's kind of this fun community event every week. And, you know, the piles are -- see, that looks like it would smell, but that actually smells very good, or at least not foul. It's not foul. It's like a foresty smell.
It smells like fresh earth.
Yeah, and we work rain or shine. So here's a rainy day, building compost. There actually is a good -- this is worth showing. We surround the fresh piles with more mature material, and that's one of the tactics we use that prevent it from being interesting to critters or prevent it from smelling, as many people would expect compost to smell. So yeah, more Sunday work session photos. We blow oxygen into the piles to keep it aerobic, another tactic we use to keep it from smelling. So there are residents that live right across the street here, so odor has been something that we've been paying attention to from day one. We've been able to stay on top of it. More photos. We manage the piles really closely, and we train everyone who comes to the site. You know, we tell people what we're doing. This is an educational site primarily, and that's a point I want to make. We're not really judging the success of this project based on the volume of finished product, but rather how much interaction we have at the community, how many folks come to the site to learn about responsible composting methods in an urban place and then leave and then spread the word to other people. So while we do give out the compost to gardeners at the Farmer's Market, it's not the only goal. And then, yeah, just hot piles. When we -- when it's done, we screen it through a screen, and then we bag it, and it goes right back to the Farmer's Market where it's distributed to gardeners. We were giving it out for free. Now we're selling it for like $10 a bag, which is pretty reasonable. And that's -- our plan is to just keep this resource in the city of Prescott and not truck it out to -- for it to decompose elsewhere. And yes, the compost process happens all months of the year, even in the, you know, the coldest days of the season. Some of those piles were 140 degrees on the inside, so it's kind of a fascinating process.
Councilman Montoya, you had a question?
Yeah.
I was curious, Gabe, when I did come out to the site, you guys, are you -- you're using solar power to do some of the powering of some of this stuff, too?
It's a pretty primitive setup that I rigged up because I don't have a lot of experience setting up solar systems. But yeah, so the fan that runs -- that blows oxygen through our active fresh piles, which keeps it aerobic and therefore not foul, runs on a solar panel. And then we have an extension cord. It also runs a sifter machine.
So the only real utility that's running through the site is the water, is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And the solar kind of just barely meets our needs, but it's okay for now. Yeah. So yeah, in the first year, 250 unique people have contributed 2,350 hours. We track these numbers pretty closely. That includes volunteering at the Saturday Market as well as on these Sunday work sessions. 50 tons of scraps have been diverted. It might even be a little more by now. About 400 bags of compost have been distributed. We give them out in chicken feed bags. They're like 30-pound bags. We're reusing chicken feed bags from Farmer's Market vendors as well. And now we've started to welcome a lot more student groups onto the site. So about 300 middle schoolers have come for field trips onto the site, which I have a few slides about. So yes, the parking on Shemer Drive is a little tight, which is a potential issue in the future that I've acknowledged. But we have school groups that come and learn about the micro and macro organisms involved in the compost process. We teach them about why piles heat up and how we mix them, just, you know, to a certain recipe. And it's a really fun time, actually. And we've had a lot of students come up to us saying that they were expecting it to be a really gross field trip that smelled, but in fact, it's not. And so that light bulb is something that we're trying to turn on for these younger generations and creating positive associations with the compost process because it's an important, you know, it is an important resource to keep organic potential waste in the community because you could pay a lot of money to truck, you know, to pay for compost and amendments that come from long ways away, or you can be empowered to create it in your backyard or on a community site. And so that's the community compost project. The city has been an incredible partner. Brian Scott at the Street Maintenance Division has been really accommodating from day one. We're really on his site, and he's been great. And yeah, it's been cool to see how many different organizations and individuals have been involved with this project. And we want to -- we hope to continue using the site as we have been. And like I mentioned before, we don't really have means to expand. We are open to expanding, but as it is now, we're keeping it like Farmer's Market, you know, centralized around the market and not expanding into like a municipal compost operation. And so the focus is on the community and not necessarily the end product, but we think that's really valuable.
That's great, Gabriel. Do you want to play your four-minute video?
Oh, sure. Let's see, Tyler, where is that?
I'll get you there.
So we made this video, we -- it was made like eight months ago, nine months ago. So this is when we just had a few piles in the site and things were just getting started. But it's kind of a fun visual.
This is not just a market to sell things. This is a market to help the community as well.
The community feel is really there. It's a lot closer, a lot tighter knit. You see people, you smile, you know, you know, it's, hey, how you doing, oh my! We love that here.
Composting gives the community an opportunity to learn about alternatives to how to manage their waste.
What I really love about this compost program is our trash is so light, and it makes me feel good giving back now that we have a community compost.
I couldn't imagine a year ago that this many people would want to volunteer their time to come throw around some food scraps and straw and leaves.
Now we mix.
It's just really inspiring.
I'm on the board of the Prescott Farmer's Market. A vibrant, a live organization, a lot of new programs. This composting program is my favorite. The USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, provided funding through a grant and featured Little Prescott, Arizona, and what Gabriel's doing here. And I just love coming out and meeting new people and digging in the dirt. It's great fun.
Composting is really valuable, and anybody, I think, just reducing, you know, reducing the trash going into the mainstream landfill is, A, really important, but B, I think, just that awareness of like, oh, any plant scraps can turn into something valuable.
I'm enjoying the sweet smell of compost and good company.
So to do it through here is awesome, and I love being able to pick up a clean bucket!
It helps me think about the environment, you know. I think it's a great thing that they're taking the food scraps from restaurants because that's one of the biggest wastes. So much food goes to waste, and I think this is probably the most pure, best way you can give it all that waste, turning it into food for your plants.
And my wife's kind of funny. She calls it now my compost church. I come here every Sunday and break the bread and it's fun just being around people.
The science that goes into making good compost, it's relatively straightforward, but it has to be done kind of precisely. And that's what's happening here with the temperature, with the air handling, with the mixing, with the water.
Then I do the squeeze test, right? So I squeeze it pretty hard. It like kind of doesn't want to hold together, but it just barely holds together. So that's like 45% moisture.
All these little steps that go into turning raw organic material into soil are happening here, and people are learning about it.
It feels good to meet people in the community who care about different things. And I don't know, to just do something that you know you don't have to do, but it's worthwhile.
I wanted to learn more about compost because I wanted to volunteer. Because my compost bin doesn't do so hot. It's actually too cool, I guess.
Composting is contagious. It's just something that everybody can get behind, and I think with climate change and environmental concerns, a drought, people really want to be doing something, even if it seems really small, to be making a difference. And this is one way that we can provide something really valuable to the community at the end of the day. People are so excited to bring their food scraps to the market.
It's just beginning, really. And people are really embracing the program. They're providing the raw materials, the city, the county. It's just a perfect partnership, and it will only grow. When people hear about it, they're like, oh, this is so cool, you know? Particularly when we have the finished product and can begin to distribute it back to local gardeners for their own backyard. And in this dry climate, you've got to use this enriched soil through compost to really grow good vegetables.
I was impressed with the green market in Manhattan. They had a compost program going there, and I thought, if you can do it in New York, you
Well, thank you, great Gabriel. I'm very impressed with the organization, and I think it's a valuable community asset now that it's becoming an asset and gets people involved, especially from the educational aspects of how do you compost, what's the value for it, people that have raised garden beds certainly can use that.
Do you feel like she has a danger to herself for others right now?
And I'm glad to see it's working out the way you were hoping it would.
Thank you.
So any other questions, comments? Councilman Montoya?
Mayor, I just want to say I would strongly encourage all the members of city council or staff or even the general public to actually just go out and see the site on a Sunday morning. It's really actually pretty impressive. There's, you know, one of the things that Gabe talked a lot about was community, and there's definitely a strong sense of community that is happening there. People are listening to music, they're working hard, they're drinking coffee, they're having a good time, and they're coming together. It's really quite something. I was reluctantly dragged there by an old neighbor who kept bugging me to go, and that's part of why Gabe's here today presenting. So thanks, Gabe, so much for the work that you and Kathleen and everyone else at the Farmer's Market are doing to make this a thing in our community.
Yeah, thank you.
And you can put together a good rainwater harvesting program at your home to provide the water necessary to have your raised garden not only produce with a good compost, but it all works well together, doesn't it?
That's right.
I'd like to make a comment. Just a question for you, Gabe.
Yeah.
Is there anything else the city can do to help you, or is there anything you need?
Well, so funding is a potentially future issue. We are applying for grants as Prescott Farmer's Market to help continue this project. And we've hired two staff members since the inception of this project, and that is coming out of the Farmer's Market payroll. But besides, funding aside, I guess future support would be great. And maybe some technical assistance with our solar would be great.
Who has that skill?
We're -- the support is the main thing.
I have a car battery if you need to hook it up to something.
Car battery? Right on. We'll talk. Yeah, well, I just want to thank the city of Prescott also for the support and for allowing this project to occur. You know, it's a start of something, for sure.
Yeah, just real briefly, thank you so much. This is fantastic. I'm really grateful to have something like this going on in our community with the pieces that you mentioned and that Councilman Montoya mentioned, with people coming together. That's terrific. The way that it provides a resource to our community, et cetera, is fantastic as well. And from a personal standpoint, I want to thank you for partnering with our school district as well to help teach our kids and whatnot. I'm one of the leaders in our school district, and I'm super grateful that they've got this opportunity, by many others that the city helps to provide, and that it's supported by private interests and whatnot as well. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Gabriel, and your continued success.
Right on. Thanks, Mayor Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next issue, is a presentation and discussion regarding
Hi, everybody. John Heine, Community Outreach Manager, Tourism and Economic Development. We do not have a video. We have a little slideshow for you to talk about our downtown hanging banners. So if you've walked around downtown, certainly around the Courthouse Plaza and points outward from there, you'll notice that there are several different varieties of banners that have been up for many years. We -- it's a partnership. The tourism office has, at least for the last 10 years, funded them and designed them. And then the city's streets department puts them up every year. About a year and a half ago, I got a phone call from Streets, and they said, you know, we're about to put the banners up. And you just want to let you know that they're starting to age, they're fraying, and some of them are falling apart and faded. So what we did is we did a combination of some older banners and some newer banners and put those up. So what we are proposing today is just to share with you some information about our plan for the future and what we'd like to do with a new generation of banners to go in the downtown area. Christine is really going to run the presentation. I was just supposed to introduce, but we have an example of one of the banners that's currently up now as well. So take it away.
Thank you, John. Hello, Mayor, members of council. This is my first presentation to you guys, so go easy on me. As John said, there is a mix of banners out and about. This is one of them. We have white banners, brown banners, black banners. We can tell that, based on our information, they were last ordered in 2015, but we think there's quite a few that are older than that. We also have a mix of materials. We have canvas vinyl out there. And then we have some banners that have the city logo, but the tourism website, so that can be a little confusing. Here's six photos of banners that are currently out there. As you can see, they're quite worn. They're faded to the point where you almost can't see the pictures. And we're here today because there are 160 light poles in the entertainment district. I bet you didn't know that. I didn't either. So there's quite a few of them. Our plan for the next several months is we are going to go over every image, every character that's on these banners to make sure they're perfect, that they go with the tourism strategy for the area. Then we'll go to print on vinyl. We'll be printing them with a local print company, and we hope to have them installed by fall of this year. Now, I threw this quote up there because you never get a second chance to make a first impression. Here in the tourism office, we know that firsthand. Our entertainment district is really important to visitors. It's usually the first place they come. So signage in the entertainment district really needs to represent Prescott and the area as a whole. So what's our vision for these new banners? Well, my favorite word is we want them to be consistent. We all want them to be the same color, the same theme. We want to have timeless banners that hold true three to five years from now. We want them all to have the same website, the same hashtag. And after speaking with Streets, we designed them to be dark in color so they show less wear and tear, less dirt, and look nicer three to five years from now. And the moment you've all been waiting for, here is theme one. Now, theme one was designed off this banner, which you've probably seen around. It's probably one of the oldest, based on our information, but it's held up pretty well. So the brown, the cream, and the black was incorporated into this new design. We chose a plain font, easy to read, and as I said, the text is going to hold true for Prescott for many years to come. The pictures are all owned by the tourism office, so we'll have no copyright or royalty issues there. And in comparison, we have theme two. Now, we chose copper because copper is very important to the state of Arizona, but the copper and black design actually match all of the historical signage that's already in Prescott. It'll match the downtown kiosk, so there'll be some nice design cohesiveness there. Going forward, Streets is going to place them all initially, and we're going to order a few extras, so if there's weather or sun damage, they can replace them as needed. We'll keep this project on our desk, and in three to five years, we'll reevaluate for another design refresh. And then all future wayfinding signs that we plan to do, we're going to tie into these banners, so there's a nice cohesive look throughout the city. Let's talk numbers. These will be paid for out of bed tax to improve the downtown aesthetic and the experience for residents and visitors alike. We did receive three quotes and we're pretty set on our company that we're going to go with, but... And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions, comments?
I'd just like to say thank you. It's important that we keep our beautiful downtown beautiful and attractive.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, I like the images. They speak to the, kind of the branding images without necessarily having to read the material on the banner itself and the fact that that one you had there to show really held up in its coloring. A lot of times, those darker colors can fade and lose their contrast, so I think that fits in well with the light poles and the other really connecting historical designs.
Absolutely. Thank you for your feedback on that.
Mayor, Councilman Tenny?
I think this is awesome as well. I really appreciate the thought and the effort that's gone into this, and I love the partnership that the city has had with the Chamber, Prescott Downtown Partnership, different business owners in town, et cetera. When we were talking with someone relatively new to town the other day, I think maybe Eric and I were both, or someone else was talking with me, downtown didn't used to be cool at all. It was, you know, kind of, pretty much there were bars and some old businesses that were closing. And downtown is cool. It's the biggest draw that we have in town, perhaps, other than the trails and our natural features like the lakes. And a big part of that is the effort that your group has put in, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I like the connection with the floral baskets, too. I've heard a lot of visitors really comment on that, so tying in the banners with them, I think it really creates a really strong image and directs them at so many of the ecotourism, the historic areas, Palace Saloon, et cetera, that people are drawn here, and it just kind of reinforces all of the downtown amenities. Any other comments? Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I think it's a well-designed program, and I think it'll add to our downtown core ambiance.
Great. Thank you for your time.
All right, we're moving on to item C, discussion and presentation regarding revision of the airport layout plan for Prescott Regional Airport.
There, it's minimized. It's minimized. Go ahead and make sure it's launched. How do I launch it? There we go.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Robin Sabata, Airport Director. And I have joining me today Charlie McDermott with Dibble, who's the Planning Manager, the Aviation Planning Manager for Dibble. And also I have Parker Northrup, the Chair of the Flight Department for Embry-Riddle Air Nautical University, Prescott. And I'd like to turn it over to Charlie. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. So we're here today to talk about the update to the airport layout plan at the Prescott Regional Airport. It's been an effort that we've been working on for the last six or eight months to bring it up to.
Good afternoon. So, we're here today to talk about the update to the airport layout plan at the Prescott Regional Airport. It's been an effort that we've been working on for the last six or eight months to bring it up to speed. We've got a series of slides today to talk about what it means and to show you what the proposed update to the ALP looks like. So, just going to give you a little bit of background, what an airport layout plan is. Truly, it's a graphical representation of your long-term vision for the airport. That's really, when you boil it down, that's really what it, in its essence, is. It also demonstrates that you are going to do your best to keep the airport safe and effective, and make sure that the traveling public can use the facility in a safe manner. What's important to note, though, is that it's more than just one drawing. It really consists of 42 sheets of an entire set of documents or plans. And what many of those plans are airspace plans, plans and profiles. We have a land use plan, a property map that we'll speak about in a few moments. So, there's really more than just this one sheet, but the ALP, the sheet that is actually signed, is truly the most important sheet in terms of what it shows, because it does reflect that vision of yours for the planning period. Excuse me. So, this is your existing airport layout plan that was approved by the FAA and yourselves back in 2019. As you know, a lot has happened at the airport since 2019. Nearly $40 million worth of improvements have been made at the airport in that timeframe, which is significant for any airport. Certainly, for Prescott, it is significant. But this is where we started, back in 2019. I know it's difficult to read. What FAA requires us to do is to, they prescribe a scale that the drawings have to be at, and they ask us for a lot of information to be put on those sheets. So, I can assure you that there's a lot of information on there, but it is by guidance that we have to show all that. So, this is where we started. And in a moment, we're going to show you what the future update looks like. But it's important to also know that airport layout plans do become outdated. And they're outdated when they don't adequately show what your future needs are. As we know, through time, things change. Operations at the airport change, tenants change, the needs change. So, it's important that we keep that airport layout plan updated to, so it reflects what your future needs are. It's also important to note that the airport layout plan has to address any deficiencies in your design standards. So, if pavement geometry isn't corrected, that would mean your ALP is outdated, that it needs to be brought up to speed to correct those design standards. It also is required that you reflect things that have been constructed. And as we know, that in the last five years, a lot has been constructed at the airport, so you're obligated to make sure that is shown and reflected on your airport layout plan. But it's also important to note that your airport layout plan is outdated if you don't protect the airspace and have the ability for the airport to grow. It's also very important that you show how you're going to control the land uses around the airport. So, if that isn't reflected, then FAA would deem that your airport layout plan is not up to date, and that would be required to be brought up to date. And the source for that information is down at the bottom. There are 39 grant assurances that every time an airport sponsor accepts a grant from FAA, there are grant assurances that come along with it. There's 39 of them. We're not going to go through all of those. The one, my favorite, is grant assurance 29, because it relates specifically to the airport layout plan. When you sign that grant agreement with FAA, grant assurance 29, you are committing to keep the airport layout plan up to date, making sure that it shows all of your existing airport property. It requires you to show all the proposed land that you would like to acquire for future growth of the airport and for land use compatibility purposes. So, that grant assurance obligates you to that. It also obligates you to show all of the proposed facilities and structures. For example, Taxway Charlie is underway. Most of it has been constructed, so that needs to be reflected in the airport layout plan. But also, grant assurance number 29 also obligates you to make sure that you show all of the proposed and existing access points to the airport. We know that you can't have open fence line around the airport where anybody can connect to the airport. FAA doesn't allow that. There's a specific process that you have to go through to get approval for that. If those access points are approved, they're called through-the-fence operations or through-the-fence agreements, that they would be shown on the airport layout plan as well. So, that's another grant assurance that comes along with grant assurance number 29. And so, with that, I'll turn it back to Robin to share a little bit about what has changed.
Thanks. Thanks, Charlie. So, a little bit has changed since 2019, when the last airport layout plan was updated. We did complete a focused runway planning study for the extension of the commercial service runway at the airport, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. We've completed several airport capital projects, and we'll be showing you those in the next few slides. We have experienced some community growth and some development around the airport, so our airport layout plan does take that into consideration, and we'll be addressing that. And also, the industry itself has gone through several changes. Many of you heard about the pilot shortage. What we've seen, particularly locally, is that there has been an increase in flight training activity associated with that pilot shortage. Through COVID, we've seen some mergers and acquisitions. We've also seen some hard choices that the airline had to make to downsize, fortunately, in other communities. We've maintained air service here in our community. One of the impacts we've seen is an increase in aircraft operations to 311,000 and change in 2021. To give you a comparison, in calendar year 20, we were at 235,000 operations. Back in calendar year 97, though, we actually did reach a high, an all-time high, of 353,000 operations. So, while we have seen recent increases, it isn't to the levels that we had hit in 1990. However, I do anticipate we may eventually go back to those levels. So, one of the big studies I just talked about was the focused runway planning extension study. The council was briefed on that back in December of 2020, and at that point, it was submitted to the FAA for their review, and they reviewed it pretty much all of last year. During that time and in that study, what we did is we looked at some challenges to the airline. Just so you understand, when the FAA makes a decision to extend a runway, the primary reason to do that is to support commercial air service. There may be other beneficiaries, but that is the goal, is to extend the runway for that reason. So, what we looked at is that we're considered a hot and high airport, and so, we need a longer runway to be able to fill all the seats in the plane. We do have some terrain challenges, increasing terrain to the west of the airport. Since 80% of the departures take off toward the west, what ends up happening is those terrain challenges do come into play, as well as any potential obstructions that could eventually evolve in those areas. There is what's referred to as an OEI, One Engine Inoperative Requirement. It's an FAA requirement to the airlines. They must take into account the fact that you could lose an engine, and they want to make sure that the approaches are clear for that. We have run into weight restrictions, and what's important is that we have found, particularly later in the day, when it's warm in the summer, we have lost as many as the ability to sell 25 seats on a 50-seat airplane. And that happened for several months over the summer. It was 20 seats, but then the FAA also changed the average weight of a passenger, and that, coupled with our terrain challenges to the west, yes, people have gotten a little fluffier. So, because of that, that does limit the number of seats. So, clearly, that's an issue. We want to make sure that we continue to have the air service. We did look at the critical aircraft. There is an evolution going on in the industry. The CRJ 200s are eventually going to age out, and we are going to be moving to slightly larger airplanes. The Embraer 170 or 175, the CRJ 700 or 900 series, somewhere between 70 and 85 seats are what we expect in the future. So, they're not really large airplanes, but that's where we're moving in terms of a critical or largest aircraft, commercial service-wise. So, we looked at the right required runway length. We think it'll be approximately 10,000 feet. We looked at alternatives. Now, there are some other benefits to that runway extension study, and that is that the U.S. Forest Service will be able to take advantage of the additional runway lengths, to be able to have additional fuel or extinguishing agent onboard their aircraft. And we have had interest expressed by them of some level of expansion. Also, we're looking at aircraft height over sensitive areas could be increased if there's a longer runway length, and then smaller airplanes, when they take off, will be higher over some sensitive uses. So, the conclusion of that study was an extension is needed. So, that extension is shown on our airport layout plan, as it has been for the last 10 years. The next steps are land acquisition, which is reflected here, the environmental processes, which are currently undergoing. You will soon hear about a workshop that we're going to offer for the runway extension for community members, so that'll be here in the next month or two. So, we're moving forward on that. There will be a benefit cost analysis, design, construction, and the relocation of instrumentation. As you all know, another capital project that needs to be shown on the airport layout plan is the completion of our terminal. Incidentally, we have won a second award for design on our terminal. We're being well-recognized, exceptional design. The passenger terminal will show up on that plan as completed. Another major capital project is the Taxway Charlie relocation, for those of you who are unfamiliar. Taxway Charlie is the main parallel taxiway map north of the main commercial service runway, and it was relocated 75 feet further away for safety or standards reasons. We completed Phase 1 already. Phase 2 is underway, and Phase 3 is about to be bid. Collectively, the relocation of that taxiway costs about as much as the terminal project. A lot of people don't know that, but it's expensive, but it's important. There's a couple of other notable private projects that I wanted to bring to your attention that are happening. One is on the bottom, Monarch Hangars. There's a new hangar construction underway. The environmental has been completed on it. The design is completed, and we should see approximately 70,000 to 80,000 square feet of new hangar construction in Phase 2, happening fairly shortly, which is great. Right now, we have over a two-and-a-half-year waitlist for hangars at the airport, so it's going to be exciting to see that get done. Also, I'm going to bring Parker up and talk about the Embry-Riddle West Ramp operations, if you'd like to address that.
Thank you, Robin. As she said, my name is Parker Northrup. I'm the Chair of the Flight Department at Embry-Riddle, so Mayor and Council Members, on behalf of Chancellor Carlson. Thanks for letting us come down and help educate you on what we're doing out there at the airport. The West Ramp is an expansion project where we relocated from our current main terminal. We have a slide coming up that'll show you the relationship of these areas, but essentially, it provided the capacity to deal with our immediate student growth that we've already experienced. If you look at Robin's baseline year of 2018, 2019, we had 368 flight students. This year, I have 802. We have had more than 100% growth in flight in three years. So, that needed, and so, the fleet has also reflected that. We had 23 airplanes three years ago. I have 75 in the fleet today. So, the West Ramp is an example of how we have expanded into another section in order to maintain our operations. One of the benefits of it is its location's on the north side, and we'll talk more about this in the next slide or a future slide, that being on the north side of the airport allows us access immediately to both runways or the entire runway environment without crossing another runway to get there, which is an important safety consideration for us.
Thank you, Parker. So, some future planned projects that we're going to be addressing over the next few slides, the Strategic Academic Flight Education, or SAFE Complex, Qatar Aviation Development, some land acquisition, and an apron for large aircraft isolation and events. So, go ahead and jump in.
All right. So, I'll be honest, we're pretty excited about this at Embry-Riddle. On the slide, if you look to the top left, is that notation for the West Ramp operation, and then our main complex directly below that. And that serves our needs from now until about the spring of '24, based on forecast student enrollments. The challenge is that we run out of space again in the summer of '24, so expansion into the Strategic Academic Flight Education Complex, or the SAFE area. In that lower-left corner, where the red circle is, is going to provide us the ability to expand within the airport property line and provide for approximately 1,000 to 1,100 students. We expect market demand to cap us out somewhere around 1,200 students over the next three to five years. As is annotated on the slide, the operating locations, West Ramp and Main Complex are sufficient for our needs. What we're looking at is a planning factor of 1,200 total students, and what we imagine, what we're planning for is to look at whether we keep our main complex and expand into SAFE with 50% of the footprint, or we go 100% relocation to the north. And those will be decisions that we'll have to work out, mostly with, you know, cost-benefit analysis, like everybody else, to figure out what's going on there. A couple of points for you that we're really happy with is that the location on the north, again, allows us to access both of those runways without crossing any other runway, which is a big factor. And then, on the lower-right, we take a little claim for Robin's growth in operations there. So, for us, we get about five and a half aircraft operations for every flight hour. In my first year, which was 2018, we flew 19,000 flight hours. This year, we'll fly 55,000 flight hours at the airport. So, our organization is pretty robust, and this expansion to the SAFE Complex, again, for us, is important to be secured by the spring of '24. And then, we're also imagining that will allow access to businesses or industry to our students on that side of the airport, in terms of a workforce development perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. One more for the SAFE, right here. Yep, there you go.
Oh, I forgot. Sorry about that. So, this is, we've completed our preliminary design of the first section of the SAFE that Embry-Riddle will occupy. We are just finishing with Dibble, the rough order cost estimates, so that we can go into bid and acquisition and permitting and the rest of that hard work. But what it shows you is that that ramp space in yellow is approximately 300,000 square feet, which is roughly equivalent to what we already occupy at the airport. We currently occupy 230,000 square feet of ramp space. So, it's a significant expansion with hangars, some office complex. And then, from the north there, you'll see the Major Frank Shield Junior Way highlighted in yellow. We imagine that's going to be a great opportunity to have that lead into this complex area as we build it out.
I know there was some question, yeah. And I know, this is the Major Frank Shield Way, new access road into the airport. It's a loop road.
And I think that's it. The other interesting feature, just because it's up there, the yellow 90-degree turn is a dual-lane taxiway, which is, really, we're going to put in opposite direction traffic at the airport, because our pace of operations, operating 30 airplanes every hour, needs that sort of return rate from the ramp and accessing the runways, which will be, it's a feature of more larger airports, but we're glad that that's been put into the ALP.
So, just so we can understand the value of this, you'll notice there's two exit taxi lanes from this particular SAFE complex. This is Taxway Alpha on the north side of the airport, and as you go around, this is where you can access either this runway or you can access this runway. What's happening right now in the community, and some folks have seen it, is that in order for the tower to facilitate all the crossings that are happening of the southern, map south, what they basically have to do is open up a hole on the runway to allow the crossing to occur, extending the patterns a bit, to be able to allow those crossings. Just as of last week, because of the high demand on the southern runway, we had 16 aircraft waiting to take off on Taxway Delta, which, if you consider a window being about three minutes, you can see the amount of delay when a student is paying $200 an hour on the Hobbs meter, waiting to do nothing but take off on the ground. It's extraordinary, and we certainly want people flight training in the air instead of taxiing on the ground. Another major operation that's expanding is Qatar Aviation, and this one is really exciting as well. By contract, they're only required to put in one 20,000-square-foot hangar and the shown parking area and ramp area. This particular plan actually shows approximately 60,000 square feet, instead of 20,000 square feet of expansion. And so, that ramp is actually quite full a lot of the time, so we're seeing really good movement in our FBO for development. And this actually is going to environmental shortly, so we're going to be moving on that one as well. Now, here's another area that's exciting. Now, we mentioned earlier that Embry-Riddle moved into the West Ramp to be able to accommodate their growth. What that did is that kept us from being able to park large aircraft, particularly things like event aircraft, U.S. Forest Service aircraft on overflow. Forest Service aircraft on overflow. So this apron for large aircraft would be approximately 175,000 square feet here, another 250,000 square feet here. And what that would do is that would allow the extra large aircraft parking. It also allows us an isolation pad, which, you know, required for security reasons to put an aircraft if there's a concern, and also for event parking. So this is what we're looking at. And just to give you context, this is the U.S. Forest Service over here, and so it is further east, map east of U.S.
So what you see in front of you is the recommended airport layout plan update. All of the projects that we have spoke about are shown on this map. We have them color-coded, so they stand out a little bit better, but we're going to adjust some of the coloring when we make the final submission to FAA. But just note that everything that, all the projects that we spoke about are all highlighted. It also shows the proposed land acquisition associated with the airport layout plan update. The next slide shows a larger scale of the land acquisition. We show on the official ALP that appears based on the scale of the drawing. As I mentioned earlier, FAA requires us to use a particular scale for the ALP, so not all of the proposed land acquisition fits on this drawing, but that's why we also defer to the airport property map to show the expanded vision of it. One particular area I want to point out is that that is in green, which is map north. That land has been identified as potential borrow site for the runway extension. Because of the runway-focused planning study that we performed, we know there's going to be slightly over a million yards of material that is going to be needed for that runway extension, and that material has to come from somewhere. So part of the study was looking at potential borrow sites on and adjacent to the airport to identify where that material could come from. During the ALP update process, we identified those parcels to the north as the best parcels that we would like to explore more through geotechnical investigations to confirm that those parcels are, in fact, suitable fill material and adequate in volume to satisfy the needs for the runway extension. So that land has been identified as land acquisition to make sure that we have access to that property. So this is the airport layout plan property map, and as you see, that's a much larger scale, which allows us to show the additional parcels that are being proposed for acquisition for approach protection and land use compatibility with the airport. We've squared off some of the parcels, as we know. If, when we talk to the property owners, if it doesn't make sense to square off the property, then we'll back it off to acquire just what is needed for those impact zones off each end of the runway. But for the purpose of the master, for the purpose of the master plan property map, we commonly will just square off the property and take the entire parcel rather than leaving just a sliver left over. So those are details that we would work out with the property owner. And then after acquisitions are complete, we would come back again to you and update the ALP and the property map to show that those parcels have been actually acquired. So with that, Robin will do a little summary.
So in voting session, there is a resolution. And to summarize what we've discussed today and also to reiterate, I think, the important points, the city does own and operate, and we're actually known as the airport sponsor for the Prescott Regional Airport. This airport layout plan is a critical planning tool and it needs to show both existing and future planned development. The sponsor must accomplish improvements in accordance with an FAA ALP. A current ALP is a prerequisite for grant issuance, so if an item does not show up on the ALP, it is not eligible for a possible grant reimbursement or acquisition. A current FAA ALP must be, is a prerequisite and must be kept up to date. We've talked about when they become outdated, and we've identified that. And I think a real key point is number seven. The appearance of any development on the ALP does not constitute an airport sponsor obligation or an FAA obligation or even a landowner obligation to undertake that future development. However, if it's not on there, receiving grants in the future is not going to happen. So it's essentially a planning document that can be molded a bit in the future if need be, obviously, and will probably be back here every couple of years with an update. Okay? And with that, if you have any questions, I've got answers.
Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilman Moore.
Sorry.
He's first.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to ask, as far as Amber Riddle's expansion, the north runway, kind of the timeline for that, Parker?
For the Phase One, for us, we'd like to get occupancy in March of '24.
Wow. Well, very exciting plans.
Yeah, it's a necessity based on our enrollment forecast.
Yeah. Congratulations. It's wonderful.
Mayor Protan.
I'd just like to thank Robin and her team for the Herculean effort that goes into all of this strategic planning. And it's important that we deliver the message that the airport and Robin has this council's support 100%, and if there's anything we can do, just give us a call.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, you mentioned the increase in flight training we've had, and I'm curious, in regards to the extension of the runway and some of the issues we've had with that, or that we have with, I know recently there's been complaints in the community about more air-traffic noise. And so I'm wondering if there's any benefit that we'll receive with the extension of the runway with regards to that in terms of, you know, and maybe, you know, Amber Riddle's plan to move and how that will affect it. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. I think those are really two very good points. One is on the runway extension. Often, if you can separate further the overflight from the affected or sensitive use, you will get a reduction in concerns expressed. And so we're really hoping with the extension of the runway, and I'll go back to that slide. As you can see, the runway, this is actually showing east, sort of east toward Prescott Valley, sort of west toward west. What you have is, with the extension of the runway, with the fact that 80% of the traffic takes off from this direction like this, then when an aircraft is climbing, obviously it will be higher over the impacted or sensitive uses. As you can see, there's some homes at this end.
Right.
Okay, so that's a real benefit. The other benefit is, this is the parallel runway over here, and it's hard to see on this diagram, so let me move forward. This is the parallel runway we just saw. This is map west, map east. This parallel runway, by the fact that Amber Riddle has kindly agreed to take some of, if not eventually all of their operations to the north side, it does increase, or I should say, balance out the use of both of the patterns. So there's a pattern associated with the north runway, and there, I mean, sorry, with the northern of the two, map north. And there's a pattern associated with the southern of the two runways. And this pattern circulates like this, and this pattern circulates like this. So as a result, what happens is, is that this runway is now more equally used. And because there are fewer homes up here, there are fewer affected parties. So by them splitting their operations, it does offer that type of benefit. So encouraging them to use the north side for its development is actually a really good move for equalizing use of the patterns over the community.
Yeah, and I think it's just important to note because, you know, I live in what used to be called North Prescott, but now is probably more accurately Central Prescott in some ways. And I don't, I notice noise when I'm outside, but I know that some areas probably have a little bit more impact from it. And I'm just, it seems like with the increase in flight training, that there's probably an increase in noise that people are noticing. So it's good to know that the extension of the runway will have some impact to alleviate some of those concerns.
I think it'll be real valuable for helping with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think there's a lot, a lot of the community maybe misunderstands the impact of extending the runway. And I think in most cases, it's going to be a beneficial effect for those residents who have some concerns about noise impact. So being able to take off earlier, gain higher altitude for the more noisy, single-engine training aircraft. Would their patterns change? Would they be able to make their turns away from the runway earlier? Would that have any impact or it's just a matter of altitude?
Right now, obviously, definable is that there will be an altitude difference. The fact is that, obviously, we can look at other ways that we can use the extra length of the runway to continue to help reduce impact would be a goal.
And I think also, as we get more commercial air traffic, some people are concerned about that as well, but quite frankly, the commercial aircraft have very little noise impact. I mean, we're dealing right now with, what, three departures a day? And with expanded use, you know, it might be four or five or whatever. And with larger aircraft, you can cover more passengers. So I think some of their concerns about commercial impact are probably even less of a concern with a lengthened runway than they are now.
I think you have a real important point here. Yes, we have two departures a day, one to LA and one to Denver, and two arrivals. We're very fortunate. Because of the pilot shortage, other communities, matter of fact, 30 other communities lost their commitment for essential air service in the United code share with SkyWest Airlines. We were one of only three cities under the United code share, essential air service cities, that did retain service. That's a real credit to Prescott as being an important part of the SkyWest system. And so as, to your point, it's very important for us to support the air carrier operations here. The runway extension, I think, is key. We are going to be on essential air service until we get a runway extension. Without a runway extension, we will be hooked on air service forever. If an air carrier cannot fill its seats because the runway's not long enough, you can never get to a point of economic viability without that support. And so I think it's very important for us to support the extension of that runway. And I believe we could move into a model very similar to Flagstaff, where four, six, even eight flights in and eight flights out a day is completely reasonable. And I think it'll provide an exceptional benefit to our community and in the region.
How many pilots short is the commercial aircraft service in the United States at this point?
In the United States, it's somewhere between 150,000 and 200,000 projected over the next 20 years. Globally, it's over 600,000 pilots that we're going to be short, based on every single pilot being produced as we concurrently produce them now.
So I think it's very easy to conclude that the pilot training program at Amber Riddle is such an essential component to national aviation planning, that being able to support Amber Riddle aviation training is really critical for both SkyWest Airlines being able to have kind of a connection to those training graduates. It really helps fill the pipeline that they need, moving into a United and maybe even a future national carrier that might want to locate here as well.
Absolutely. Three years ago, we were the third busiest collegiate flight training base in the country. We eclipsed Daytona Beach last year, became the second busiest. This year, we're eclipsing U N D. We are, by the end of this year, the busiest collegiate flight training base in the country. And thank you, Amber Riddle and the other flight training institutions operating at Prescott. We are the solution. And we're critical to the nation's needs to be able to provide access and good service throughout the national air transportation system and throughout the globe.
You know, we were so incredibly unfortunate to be able to get the funding and be able to build that beautiful new terminal. I've heard, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the cost of that terminal of who were intending to build it today would be almost double what we ended up being able to finance and complete.
Yes. Actually, just to give you an example, the ceiling alone, the Douglas Fir ceiling was the G M P, Guaranteed Maximum Price on that, that came in at about a half million, was double that by the end of the project. Aside from the fact that the supply chain challenges would have put us 40 weeks behind. We have had exceptional support from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Arizona Department of Transportation and the state of Arizona. Folks realize, this is the only regional airport we have in Yavapai County and one of only two in northern Arizona. This is an important asset. We need to continue to support and protect. We generated $194 million in economic benefit last year alone. Two of the three biggest.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, and I really applaud your leadership in getting a lot of these projects moving forward, making sure that the FAA understood what our future plans were. And clearly, the airport layout plan is absolutely essential component to this. So the FAA understands what our plans and hopes are so that they can justify funding a lot of these major improvements, knowing that those investments, or at least reimbursements, are appropriate for the continued growth of this incredibly valuable asset to our community. So I thank you very much for that, Dr. Sabata. Councilman Moore.
No.
Oh, that's Councilman Tenney.
Is that all right? Okay, super. I just want to echo what's been said. Like, probably all of us have heard concerns in the community expressed about airplane noise, especially from the training planes and whatnot, and I'm sympathetic to that. I'm empathetic to that. Every once in a while, I'm out in my yard and visiting with somebody and something goes overhead, and I have to pause my conversation for a few seconds as it goes by. But I'm very grateful that we've got this resource in town that's helping to solve a statewide, nationwide, and worldwide problem with pilot shortage. If I'm the person who calls up Amber Riddle and the airport, the city on Tuesday to complain about airplane noise and then goes down to fly off to see my grandkids on Wednesday and complains because there's a shortage of pilots, I need to take a step back and kind of evaluate my priorities a little bit, I think.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Councilman Moore.
I would just like to echo what Mayor Protan recently said about how, as a staff or as a council, we support the airport and the expansion of the airport and the area layout plan, and we appreciate Amber Riddle's commitment to our community. We appreciate the contribution that DIBL's making, and we especially appreciate you, Dr. Sabata, and all that you're doing to protect our airport and making sure that we do protect the future of our airport here in Prescott.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
No? All right, I think we're concluded here. So thank you all for attending. Thank you very much for your presentations, and this study session is adjourned.